Call to order. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and will be posted later on the Board's YouTube channel. Trustees be reminded to turn off your microphones and camera on your devices until you are recognized to speak. Please only use the chat box to type "hand up." Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. We have guests on the line who will be presenting delegations to us this evening. Opening prayer. Trustee Kelly, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, the National Anthem, and the Oath of Citizenship?
Yes, and through you, Chair, in the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit. Amen. O loving Savior, you accepted those who were outcasted by society. You created unity when there was division. You taught love when there was hate. We ask for your Holy Spirit to visit us this evening and bless our meeting with your fulfilling love. May your divine teachings guide us this evening to enable us to act in the best interests of our diverse body, to practice what you have preached to us. Through you, divine leader, we pray. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and Holy Spirit. Please rise for the National Anthem and Oath of Citizenship.
Item one point two, motions adopted in camera. There were no motions adopted in camera. Item one point three, information received in camera. Vice Chair Duarte, please read the information received in camera.
Motion adopted in camera. Information received in camera. The following information was received in camera. Retirements. Jackpin Hart, Nora Kinn, Vechenko, Monica Kiss, and Deborah Trempele retiring June thirty at twenty twenty-one. Basil Griffin retiring July thirty-first, nineteen twenty-one. Consultant Curriculum Student Success, OYAM, Schism Pathways. Mark Ives appointed as consultant curriculum student success for OYAM Schism Pathways effective September first, twenty twenty-one, up to three years with the possibility of a one-year extension. Vice Principal, Special Education Service Summer Learning Program. Joni O'Reilly is appointed as Vice Principal, Special Education Services Summer Learning Program for Summer School, twenty twenty-one, with a renewable term July twenty-twenty-two at the Board's discretion and pending funding. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Vice Chair Duarte. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing that there are none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Trustee Agnew?
Moved by trustee Agnew. Do we have a seconder?
O'Brien.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Churnata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee Rajti?
In favor.
Motion carries. Moving on to item three, Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Budget ten, item ten point three, budget report. This item deals with budgets. Salaries are included in the budget. My wife is an occasional teacher with the Board. Thus, this item deals with occasional teacher salaries. Therefore, I will be declaring a conflict of interest.
Thank you for the notification. Mr. Chair?
Trustee DeRosa? I will repeat the sentence.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, there are no presentations. Item number five, five point one, declined delegations. There were a total of seven declined delegations this evening. We have five delegations. Our delegates are on the line. I will let them know when to begin. Item five point two?
Mr. Chair, I have my hand up.
Chair, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, trustee O'Brien.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, policy one point zero six states, at the discretion of the chair, additional delegations may be added as deemed appropriate. So this is an issue tonight, which has raised huge stakeholder attention. Would it not have been more prudent to allow more, if not all the delegations, the right to present this evening?
It's again, it is at the discretion of the chair. And when I ran as chair, I mentioned that I would not rule by exception. Therefore, we have a total of five delegations. There is a mix of for and against. Therefore, I felt it was adequate.
Just may I respond to that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you may, yeah.
I know what you said when you were elected, but would this not be an exceptional case considering the huge, huge stakeholder attention that it has gathered? Wouldn't, I mean, that that item isn't there for policy for a reason?
I'll reiterate, I felt it was adequate. There is a multitude of correspondence. We've received hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of emails. Therefore, I feel that the delegations that are put forward tonight are representative of of the matter. Trustee, sorry, trustee Carabella, you have your hand up?
I was next in line, trust, uh, Mr. Chair.
It's difficult, trustee Antamasi, without using the chat box where there is a clock, I can tell whose hand is up next. If your hand is up outside of that and you haven't spoken, then I will never see your hand. So if trustee Carabella would like to cede the floor to you, then that's fine. But according to what I see, trustee Carabella is up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I was withdrawing, so I concede my spot. Thank you.
Trustee Antamasi?
So the point of order stems from the fact that you just stated that you would not rule by exceptions, yet you decided unilaterally that you were going to divide fifty-fifty those that are for and those who are against. That in itself is an exception because there's no, oh, there, excuse me, I'm not finished. There's no rule in our bylaws that requires you to make that determinate determination.
Are you finished, trustee Antamasi? I know you have a delay.
I am.
So there was no rule. We accepted the first five delegates who put forward. By changing this, the the bylaws as written is the exception. So we did, there was no rule by exception. Trustee DeRosa, you have your hand up? Trustee DeRosa?
Mr. Chair, I will cede my my hand up.
Thank you. So we're moving on to item five point two. Supporting our diverse school community. Our first delegation will be Ms. Runions. Please be reminded that you have ten minutes for your presentation and that you must stay to the script that is part of tonight's board agenda package. I asked staff to assist me in keeping track of time. At the end of the delegation, there will be an opportunity for trustees to ask questions for clarification purposes. Ms. Runions, are you ready to begin?
Yes, I am.
Please begin.
My name is Emily Runions. My pronouns are she and her. I'm a parent of a student of the Halton Catholic District School Board who identifies as LGBTQ. I have written this letter to delegate to the board my views on the motion of supporting a diverse school community that trustee Agnew has brought forward. I fully and wholeheartedly support this motion. We as a community need to take the right steps and direction to make our education system fairer and more inclusive for everyone. These steps will have a profound impact on the everyday lives of the individuals in the LGBTQ community within our school board. And as a parent and as a community member, I feel it's of the utmost importance that we provide a safe and inclusive space for all of our students, staff, and community members that identify as LGBTQ. We are living in a very diverse world where acceptance and tolerance for gender and sexual identity is still lacking. No individual should have to feel excluded because of their sexual orientation or gender identity. And it's embarrassing that in two thousand and twenty-one, I have to write this letter to advocate for my child and for the children of other parents that identify as LGBTQ. What are we teaching our kids by not allowing this motion to move forward? By not passing this necessary motion, are we basically saying that if your child identifies as part of the LGBTQ community, that God won't accept them? I have learned how many suffer from serious depression, anxiety, engage in cutting, and consider suicide due to this lack of acceptance. I assumed people in our Catholic community would care as I do. It's important to remember that you do not need to fully understand the nuisance of gender identity or sexuality to know that each individual person knows who they are better than you ever will. It is so important for us to be educated and to help educate others about how much acceptance or lack of acceptance impacts our LGBTQ kids. Young people have increasingly been coming out or identifying as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and more recently as transgendered during adolescence. And this coincides with greater awareness and visibility of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender people in society, the media, schools, congregations, and communities. More widespread access to information about sexual orientation and gender identity and LGBTQ resources throughout the Internet has contributed to significant changes in how children and adolescents learn about LGBTQ people and their lives. And increasingly, this has helped young people come out at a much earlier age than prior generations of LGBTQ adults. And as a parent who is deeply rooted in her faith, and I want to remind you that for many people, religion can be a source of comfort, hope, and community. But for others, religion has been a source of bullying and pain. And we as a board have an anti-bullying policy that outlines the importance of a healthy, safe, and inclusive learning environment where all students feel accepted. This is a necessary condition for students' success and well-being. Bullying broadly defined is unwanted, harmful, verbal, physical, psychological, sexual, or social acts by an individual or group, as well as any real or perceived threat or imbalance of power. And when individuals or groups use religion to demean and exclude and make LGBTQ individuals feel bad about themselves or harm them in any way, this is bullying. LGBTQ individuals are particularly vulnerable to religion-based bullying because of the history of religious groups condemning LGBTQ people, treating them as less valued, preaching at them, calling LGBTQ people's sexual orientation or gender identity sinful. These are all examples of religion-based bullying. And I believe that all people should have a place in their chosen faith communities and that no person should be made to feel that who they are is a sin, whether or not they belong to a faith community. I hope that as a board and that you as trustees can come together and do better. By not allowing a safe and inclusive space for all members of the LGBTQ community within our schools would be an absolute disgrace. And finally, I just want to say by standing here today in this very public forum, I'm basically outing my own child, who has not come out to anyone but myself and a few of her peers. And I'm doing this with her full permission, of course. But I want you to know that I work very, very hard to educate myself, along with others, on how to be an ally for the LGBTQ community. And I really want to make the world a more kinder and loving place for all LGBTQ people to live. The commitment that this motion outlines shows love and tolerance, and it's so important to families like mine. And by showing willingness to pass this motion to inform and educate and include LGBTQ people, we will set a tone that is often missing for our youth. We need to create new ways for LGBTQ, LGBTQ people to see themselves represented. And if flying a rainbow flag for a month can provide some hope for these individuals, then why would you not allow it? This is the right first step to show the world and the community that our schools are a safe, kind, and inclusive, loving place for all the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Runions. We do have some some questions. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Ms. Runions, for sharing and for coming forward with your delegation. I know it's not an easy thing to do, and I am an ally. What does the flag mean to you?
I think it just it just shows, it shows our these kids that they're recognized. And, you know, it's it's a symbol for them. You know, the the flag has has, each color has a meaning. And I know there's some some presentations that will go in detail and explain that. But I just, I think it's it's important to have that symbol for our kids to see themselves represented.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up question?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have trustee O'Brien, followed by trustee Agnew. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Runions, I want to say, first of all, thank you so much. It takes a lot of courage to speak out like the way you just did. I'm really impressed by that. But I know your courage will lead to fruitful discussion. Question of clarification. You stated that LGBTQ individuals are particularly vulnerable to religion-based bullying because of the history of religious groups condemning LGBTQ people, threatening them as less valued, preaching at them, and calling LGBTQ people's sexual orientation or gender identity sinful. So my question is, so are you implying that the Catholic Church is calling LGBTQ people's sexual orientation or gender identity sinful?
I'm not implying that the Catholic Church is saying that. I'm saying that there are individuals that will use, you know, the Bible, and they will use scriptures from the Bible to to like be unfair to the to the human rights of others. And I just think that that's that's not right. That's that's bullying. It's it's it's, you know, there's there's there's, there's so many things that in scripture that, like, condemn homosexuals. And the scriptures and stuff were written for very different reasons that people are using them for today. And I think it's just really important that we interpret these, these things in the Bible using, like, compassion and love as our guide, as Christ would, would ask us to do.
Thank you so much.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up question?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you're next, followed by trustee DeRosa. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor?
Thank you very much. And through you, Mr. Chair, thank you very much, Emily, for coming and speaking with us. I am an ally, and I know how, how hard that was for anyone to come and speak about anything that is so emotional and so personal. So thank you for coming and sharing with us. You mentioned a, a number of reasons of why the flag is important, the pride flag is important. I'm wondering, from your child's perspective, what do you think seeing that flag flown would mean for your child? Yeah, that's just, I know it's a hard one to answer, but, you know, I, I, I just, I wonder what that would, what do you think that would mean?
I think it just, it just, it just shows. It shows like love and tolerance. It just shows that here we are as, as a community, as, as a, as a, you know, as the Catholic School Board, saying, we see you. I mean, this, this whole process was brought to, brought forth by a student that says, hey, I want to feel recognized. And this is how I, this is how I, I feel validated. So, I mean, I can't speak right for my daughter because she's not here right now, but I know that would be important to her.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up question?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Emily, thank you for, for this, that very passionate and difficult presentation. I think it's very difficult to feel the personal, the personal experience of having a child with LGBTQ. So I, and if I'm not using the proper words, please, I'm making, I'm making a big, big effort to learn. My, my hair will, will give away my age. So I am trying to adapt. So the, I hope the effort makes, makes sense. And I will, again, I admire your courage for your present, for your presentation. My question is simple. In my life experience, bullies, bullies normally back down when they're stood up to. The other, the other question, the other question that comes to mind is, we're making, we're making statements that I'm sure are very valid and supported. But I, I find a hard time believing that the majority of our community really shuns, shuns differences to the extent that it's being described. And I'm really struggling to understand that because as a Catholic, as a Catholic community, we do, we do, we, we do follow Jesus and his teachings. We, we are held to, to embrace, to include, and to, to love at the end of the day. And I think that, generally speaking, I would say that, my impression anyways, is that the majority of our constituents practice those, those values. So are we talking about the, help me understand, referring to the, to the bullies who are the minority in society who are oppressing these young kids? Help me understand.
I, I mean, I, I've read, I've read a lot of the, the letters that had come in that were against this motion. And I think there's a perfect example in, in, in this, in this package that, that shows the intolerance and the, the lack of acceptance. And, I mean, my daughter's 13 years old. So when she first told me, I was so scared for her. Because I knew just being different would, would, she would face challenges because of that. And, I mean, she's, she's going to face challenges either way. So, you know, I had a choice whether to, how, how I was going to, to kind of accept it and, you know, try to even just rub my head around it. And I think the things that I had done were educate myself. I belong to a, a private Facebook group with 25,000 other moms of, of kids who are LGBTQ. And that group alone has just helped me understand the, the struggles. And, you know, the, the, the wins for these kids. And you, you may think that most people support, and I will, I will agree with you. I think the majority of people are, are very accepting and understanding. But I think there are still a lot of people that, that lack the understanding to, to be accepting of it.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Antomasi, I see you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Emily, thank you again. I echo everybody's sentiments in the sense for having the courage to appear. So let me understand, from your perspective, how this particular motion, and if we incorporate this motion into action, how that's going to stop bullies?
I, I don't know if it will. I mean, you know, it's like, I can't, I can't say that there's not going to be people that are, are going to be against it. There, there definitely is. But I think as, as a, as a board, she's saying, like, this is what we're doing, and this is what we're doing to show acceptance and inclusivity and diversity in our, in our board. Like, yeah, I think that's, that's important. I also think, you know, there's, this is the flying a flag and putting up a poster, that's one thing. But having teachers have some sort of sensitivity training and, you know, using the right pronouns and learning, learning more than, than what they know. I think that's, that's probably important too, because then they can kind of monitor what's acceptable and what isn't. And hopefully stop the bullying that, that does, that does come up. I know Nicole and her, her delegation last time said there was, there was classrooms and teachers that she didn't feel safe being herself with. So that's, I think that's important. I think it's, we need to educate everybody on it.
A follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yes, please proceed.
So Emily, so you're undergoing or, or meeting with parents. Would you perhaps speak to the fact that what would be, what would serve your child more? Training of teachers in a curriculum that speaks to how to accept and interact with children that identify themselves with the LGTB? Or do you think that a flag or a message sent via email with a flag on it would go further than the actual training of her classmates and the teachers that teach those, her classmates?
Well, I think, I think it's, I mean, I think the, the flag is a, is a good first step. I think it's kind of introducing the, the questions that, that may come up. And I think, yeah, I think having the teachers being trained on, you know, on how to accept somebody that comes into their class that may be transitioning, I think that's so important. And I think that would be huge for these kids. The flag is just, is, is a symbol, right?
Thank you. Are there any other trustees who have a question? I don't see any others. So Ms. Runions, I would like to, to thank you. I'd like to thank you for your courage. I would like to thank you for feeling comfortable to share your family story with us. I hope you feel that this is a safe space, and I hope that all our, our parents, students, and, and all who come in to, to present to us feel that this is a safe space. We are all motivated to, to learn and understand in here. So thank you. Thank you for your time. Our response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item 8.1. We'll go to our next delegation, which is the Bodners and Ms. Power. You also have 10 minutes. Please begin.
Thank you very much for having us. I just wanted to change something a little bit here. Not really change, but there was a change. We do have someone speaking in our slideshow presentation by the name of Jennifer Healy. A bit at the last moment, she wasn't able to be online with us, so that's why we have Alexandra with us. And I'm going to share my screen with you. And I just want to, while I do that, let you know that I am a parent sitting beside my daughter and full of tears after Emily's delegation. But I also want to let you know, and it does say it in our presentation, that I am a teacher in the board.
Good evening, Director Daley, Chair Murphy, Vice Chair Duarte, HCDSP trustees, and all superintendents. My name is Taya Bodner, and speaking with me is my mom, Michaela, and her friend and colleague, Jennifer. We thank you for allowing us to speak here tonight.
My friend Jennifer and I are both Notre Dame 1995 graduates. Between us, we have five daughters at St. Elizabeth's Seaton, ranging from grade one to grade eight. Taya is an altar server at St. Paul's, attending Corpus Christi in September, and I'm in my 21st year of teaching.
I'm sorry, Amazon delivery.
For HCDSP. And as such, these are my students that I am supporting. Jennifer is a lecturer at St. Paul's and a teacher for Duffham Peale Catholic. Our faith and our HCDSP roots have shaped the women we are today and the girls we are raising.
In the late 70s, the pride flag was created, inspired by the word sung by Judy Garland's song, "Over the Rainbow." This flag has become a familiar symbol of unity and acceptance for the 2SL GTBQ+ community. The Halton Catholic District School Board has its own flag of sorts: achieving, believing, belonging. While all the three pillars of the HCDSP are relevant to this motion, I would like to draw your attention to the third one: belonging. Student voice is to be omnipresent, and we are to provide safe, inclusive, responsible, and welcoming school communities. Nicole Hotchkiss's delegation on April 6th is a perfect example of student voice, along with the letter surveys and petitions that have arisen from this motion. Please consider the mission of the board as you listen to our delegation tonight.
The 2017 HCDSP climate survey that we found indicated that in all grades, just over three out of every 10 students do not feel safe at school. And almost 30% of high school students feel like they don't belong. By 2023, our climate surveys will need to include more data about these student identities. As high school begins, some students may consider coming out. Did you know that these students are 10% less likely to graduate than their heterosexual peers? Other recent surveys indicate that 64% of 2SL LGBTQ+ students felt unsafe at school, and schools where 60% bullying over sexual orientation occurs. As a student, I feel that you need to do better for us, as this is the time in our lives that we need the most support.
Last year, trustees had a training session on human rights and equity that focused on inclusive curriculum and addressing systemic inequalities. Trustees were told that they were to reexamine some of the beliefs that they've held. And to do the work, it will require moving from safe spaces to courageous spaces. The trustees were also reminded that it's not about them as individuals, but it's about supporting the entire system and all of our students. Please take note of the definition of diversity given to you during your training. The words "gender" and "sexual orientation" are part of our diversity. And as Jesus taught us, it is important to love and respect all diversities.
The Human Rights Code prevails over separate school rights when it comes to students' sexual orientation, gender identity, and religion. For example, we allow our students who practice the Muslim faith to wear their hijab in schools. Voting against this would be discriminatory. A petition called "No Pride, No Funding" was recently started by Paula DeBueno, a former lawyer and teacher with the TCDSB. Mr. DeBueno's petition continues to gain ground. We would like to respectfully remind you about the negative publicity that the HCDSP received 10 years ago, when trustees voted against accepting the ministry-mandated Bill 13. The vote was overturned, and the ban on gay-straight alliances was lifted.
Under the belonging mission, the goals and strategies include words like "safe," "welcoming," "accepting," "mental health," and "well-being." You say that at HCDSP, the health and well-being of all students is your highest priority. Your spaces are to be safe, inclusive, and welcoming. How can you say that your schools are truly welcoming and inclusive places if you oppose this motion? If you say no to flying the pride flag and putting safe space posters up in your classrooms, then you're saying that HCDSP does not support all its students, and is not a place that fosters a sense of belonging.
HCDSP values include a focus on the Catholic social teachings. The Catholic social teachings are taught to our students from K to 12. The posters adorn classrooms, and they are quoted in social justice projects. Human dignity, community, and the common good, option for the poor and vulnerable, global solidarity, rights and responsibilities, and promotion of peace are all in alignment with this motion. Our focus on faith prayer says, "And to see your face and love you in everyone else we meet, especially those we may find it hard to love."
Bullying happens in our schools, and the bullying of our 2SL LGBTQ+ students is no exception. Our amazing non-Catholic students have the right to express their religious freedoms and be respected. So why are our 2SL LGBTQ+ students any different?
I'll remind you of the story of Jesus meeting the woman at the well. She was a Samaritan, and she had had many husbands, and she was a female, three reasons why most Jewish men would not speak to her. However, Jesus not only approached her for conversation, he also asked to drink from her cup, a symbolic gesture, as this was a place where her lips had touched. On that day, one of many, Jesus demonstrated that we humans are all equal. We are no better than one another, and we certainly cannot judge another person. We need to raise each other up and support one another, and this includes our 2SL LGBTQ+ students.
While Pope Francis upholds the Catholic teaching on same-sex marriage, he has made it very clear where he stands. Above all else is love, especially the agape love, the unconditional love that Jesus taught us that supersedes all. As stated in the Catechism, we are not to condemn, judge, or marginalize. By voting in favor of this motion, you support our 2SL LGBTQ+ students, as Pope Francis has instructed all of us to do.
While we don't pretend to have the same amount of knowledge as people who dedicate their lives to interpreting the Bible, there are many scholars and theologians who support the 2SL LGBTQ+ community, such as Austin Hark and Father James Murren. There are also many scholarly articles debunking the Bible codes that seem to get thrown around during these debates. Trustee training from Michael Lee Skinner taught that in the eyes of the Church, every person, regardless of sexual orientation, possesses an intrinsic dignity, which must always be respected.
The Institute for Catholic Education in Ontario is clear that it is imperative that 2SL LGBTQ+ students find a safe space in every Catholic school. Catholic schools should consciously create an environment where students who feel marginalized, rejected, or vulnerable can experience safe, nurturing, inclusive communities of faith. The bishop supports boards taking a positive approach to express this commitment, including recent information that went out to directors reiterating that "we are all wonderfully made."
A couple of letters I saw in support of this motion are heartbreaking to read as a teacher. Some members of the 2SL LGBTQ+ community describe suffering from bullying, anxiety, and depression as a result of lack of support at school. Here is a selection of personal comments from HCDSP current and former students. Flying the flag and including posters in classrooms reaffirms that God loves us all unconditionally, and this motion ensures these students know they are loved, respected, and accepted.
ensures these students know they are loved, respected, and accepted. Working towards a more inclusive environment at our schools could literally save the lives of the students that I teach.
Policies that are put in place must include specific measures and explicitly address homophobia. The GSA's were a great first step. However, they obviously haven't been enough, and a decade has passed since their inception. The message needs to be sent loud and clear from the top down to the entire school community, that we will not permit intolerance and homophobia, and flying the flag is a small step in the right direction. During Nicole's delegation, trustee DeRosa asked, "Where do we stop?" The answer is that we don't stop till everyone feels safe, supported, accepted, and loved. And yes, while all groups matter, it's the 2SL LGBTQ+ house that is on fire right now, an analogy also used with the Black Lives Matter movement. You have the power to put out the flames.
School boards must lead, encourage, and respect all community stakeholders by holding space for difficult but courageous conversations at all levels of the board. It means promoting the understanding of what an ally is and what personal pronouns mean. It means committees, information sessions, data collection. It means safe spaces. It means inclusive books in our libraries. It means digging in and doing honest work. It means honest and open professional development for all staff to empower them with credible information, so that the 2SL LGBTQ+ communities know that we love and support them, as they are children of God. This is 2021. Let's practice what we preach. Follow the Catholic social teachings. Support this motion.
We thank you for your support. God bless.
Mr. Chair, we cannot hear you.
Sorry, I was muted. You have the floor, trustee. So trustee O'Brien, followed by trustee Agnew, trustee Guzzo, and then trustee Antomasi. Please proceed, trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, the three, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Michaela and, is it Taya? And Taya, great presentation. You speak with a lot of passion, and it's very well thought out. Question, one of your points, you said, page six, Michaela, "Jesus taught us is important to love and respect all diversities." Can you please point out to me in Scripture where it says that, because I don't recall seeing it, the word "diversity" or "diversities"?
Want me to answer that, or Alex, or does it matter?
You go, you take that one, Michaela. I'll jump in.
I'm not going to pretend that that's in Scripture, but we do understand that we are to be there for every single human being. We are created in the image and likeness of God. God didn't make any mistakes. So when we look at every human being, we are there to, as parents, as teachers, as people of faith, to ensure that every single human and all the diversities are accepted.
And I will add to that, trustee O'Brien, I will say that we are not here tonight to debate my faith, Michaela's faith, Taya's faith, your faith. We know, based on the teachings in the racism and discrimination report that was part of the director's letter that you guys received training in, that the Catholic Church that feels that discrimination is not okay, and that the HCDSP aspires to uphold that all people are created in the image and likeness of God, and as such, dignity, I should say, is inherent in all. So that is what we are here tonight, not to discuss your faith, not to discuss my faith, but to discuss what our children need in 2021. And what they need us to do is they need us to support them and to make them feel loved, and to make them feel accepted. And raising the flag is but the first step in that process.
Trustee, trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up question?
I'll jump back in the queue, because as you can see, there are people in line ahead of me.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much to the three of you, and I'm sorry that your other delegate wasn't able to be here, but I appreciate you obviously did a tremendous amount of work and research, and you could feel the passion in your presentation, your delegation. So thank you so much. I actually have a question, I have two questions for you, Taya, if you're okay with me directing you a question?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm just, I mean, this is so courageous and brave for you to be here. It can't be easy to speak in front of this number of people. I'm wondering why it was important for you personally to delegate on this matter tonight?
Well, I've always tried to stand up for people, no matter who they are, and this is a community right now that is being oppressed and that is in need of help.
Amazing. Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. And Taya, what does, again, I'm not, you know, I'm not necessarily picking on you. I just think I love hearing from students, and this is really about our students and our staff, but this is about our students. What is that flag, what would that flag mean to you, to see that flag? What does that mean?
The flag is just the beginning, but it is also a visual representation that students and staff are accepted and loved and safe in schools, and it is also a sign for others that they need to show others the love and the acceptance that they deserve. And also, it's important for this to be taught in schools, because, and at a young age, because children are not born discriminating. Children are going to be more open to ideas because their opinions are not yet set in stone.
Thank you, Taya. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Up next, we have trustee Guzzo. You have the floor.
Okay, there we go. Sorry, my buttons were frozen. Hello, Taya, Michaela, and is it Dr. Power or Alexandra? It's okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for the wonderful delegation. Since trustee Agnew picked on Taya, I'm going to, I'm gonna send my question to Alex, if that's okay. Is flying the flag enough? Thank you very much for that question, because I think that also speaks to, when trustee Antomasi, I think his name is, made a similar insinuation in his last questions to the first delegate. So I want to start by saying, I thank you for having me here tonight, and to reiterate your question that you're asking, is raising the flag enough, and how will this make a difference? Well, raising the flag, the pride flag alone, it's never going to be enough, but it has to be the start for right now. The pride flag, as was mentioned in our delegation, was first adopted by Harvey Milk and Gilbert Baker in 1978. And as stated by Mr. Milk, the flag, it's not about personal gain, it's not about ego, it's not about power, it's about giving young people hope. The LBGTQ+ community, youth in our communities, they need to feel this hope right now. They need to hope that they are loved and that they belong within our Catholic community, and they do. To raise the pride flag symbolizes our commitment to inclusion and acceptance. It symbolizes that while none of us are perfect, like you mentioned, Dr. or Mr. DeRosa, we're all, we're just always striving for improvement, that we, as a community, are going to strive towards creating a safe place for our youth. And this is needed more tonight than ever before, okay? As a mother and as a physician, I was absolutely gutted reading some of the hate-filled passages that were shared from our very own Catholic community in preparation for this meeting. As was so eloquently put by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and I had wanted to make this point, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And we need to be the example. We need to shine the light of acceptance and love onto the hatred and fear embodied in those emails and in those passages. We need to raise the pride flag, and we need to create signage for our teachers to show our students that they have a safe space to be themselves. Your question, will this be enough? No, never. Not until every child, adult, person amongst us feels safe being their own genuine selves. Not until, as a society, we rid ourselves of judgment and hatred towards others, will it ever be enough. But progress is where we have to aim, and progress, like the seeds of change, need first to be sown. We need to plant this flag, and in doing so, cultivate the love, the acceptance of everyone, no matter their race, no matter their religion, no matter their gender identity, or their sexual orientation. And that is what is put before you tonight, that option to start somewhere, to start here. And as Mr. Antomasi had insinuated, well, can we do training? Can we do this? No, we have to do it all. And tonight, the motion in front of us is whether or not to raise the flag and whether or not to put up signage, and that is where we need to start. And then we do our training, okay? Then we send out letters to say, "We accept you." Then we keep going until everyone is accepted. So to answer your question, Ms. Guzzo, is it enough? No, but it is the first step that we need tonight. Thank you. And thank you, and thank you for your advocacy, all of you. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Next, we have trustee Antomasi, followed by trustee DeRosa, then trustee O'Brien. Trustee Antomasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Vitella and Michaela and Alexandra. So I heard reference to a particular statistic, which said, or you stated, that 74% of people who identified themselves as LGBT felt unsafe in schools. Can you please let me know where that statistics comes from, and whether or not it includes both public schools and public Catholic schools?
I'm just gonna go back in. I did have to, my, what we did was like over 40 slides, and we cut it and cut it and cut it, so that we could get it down to 10 minutes. So I'm just gonna go back to that slide, because I could send that to you after. It was, I don't know if this one was from the EGAL survey, or the Canadian, I think it was EGAL. And I did not include any statistics for this from public versus Catholic, but those statistics do exist. I did find some today. I just don't have them on me.
Would you not agree with me that perhaps the case scenario that unfolds in Catholic schools is vastly, well, not vastly, but it is different than the way it manifests itself in public schools?
No, I'm not. Do you know what? I do have something right here in front of me, Michaela. So thank you so much, because you are right. There is a difference. And this is based out of the Trevor Project, which comes from EGAL Canada, and they looked at suicide attempts in the past 12 months in youth who were identified as LBGTQ, and they compared those youth who heard parents or those in the community using religions to say negative things. And in those group, the risk of, you said religion was important to them. If they heard parents using religious speak to say negative things, they were 8%, 8% more likely to try to end their own lives. So in this particular scenario, and Michaela, I know you do have some of those stats, so I don't know if you've found any of those are. In this particular scenario, being in a Catholic school unfortunately is not protective because of the guise that some individuals use religion to cover their distaste. And I will reference you back to the many emails that were received, okay? And I even have the stats here that were so fondly done up for us. 35% of the letters from people who identified themselves as being part of the HCDSP community were against this motion, and they used words such as people who had internal derangement, or who were sinful. Okay, so we are in the Catholic school. Unfortunately, we are not protective of our LBGTQ community because of the verbiage that we do use towards this community. Michaela, I'll let you add anymore that you have.
Just going through my phone, because I know I took screenshots, but what I was going to say, but thank you for that, Alex, for those statistics. I had reached out to a group called Free Mom Hugs, and they are a group of people, moms and dads, that support the LGBTQ+ community at different functions, events, pride parades, et cetera. And they give out hugs to the kids that don't have parental support. There are statistics that if those students are not getting support, this was in the Catholic Register, actually, there's an article about it, and I can find that after for you. But if they don't get the support at home, and they don't get the support at school, then the thought is, why bother, right? I mean, what kind of life is that for these poor children? So when I reached out to this community group, and I asked them for some information and to sort of write a letter maybe, and that kind of thing, there was mixed feelings among the group. And the quote from them says, "They are afraid pride flags and posters give illusion of safe spaces when it's not truly one." So there's your difference for Catholic versus public. They don't believe that we actually have these safe spaces for these children.
Antomasi, do you have a follow-up question? Yes, please go ahead.
So Dr. Alexander, Vitella, and Michaela, flying a flag is really not curriculum. Would you agree with me? It's a symbol.
So is wearing the blue shirt for Autism Day, just like your trustees did in 2019 and posted on Twitter. It's a symbol, just like there are having open doors in our house and feeding others, symbols of openness and acceptance. There are a lot of symbols that we use in our schools. So yes, I agree, it is a symbol, but symbolism is important in society.
But Dr. Alexander, you did state that perhaps this is only a start, and would you not agree with me that perhaps the better way to go at this is to provide training and provide the education within the classroom, which would go further, because it would service grades from grade one all the way to grade 12, and it would be a repetitive element whereby you're bringing people together, and you're allowing people to understand one another and to communicate at a different level. Do you believe, then, that the flag can do that all on its own?
Who said we have to choose one or the other? We do not, okay? I think that raising the flag is the place where we need to start. No, 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 I am still talking. I am still talking. You're going to, you aren't going to allow me to finish. So yes, I think the flag is a very important symbol of our willingness to start this conversation. I think we need to put effort into creating training and to making this a more, a more educated zone, okay, for our teachers and our administrators, okay? But I have a question for you, in fact, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna flip this back at you, because on the HCDSP website, as part of public record, and the report that I've already alluded to once, the racism and discrimination responding with faith, hope, and love, okay, this was, this was a training that you received, okay? So this document reads, and I will quote here, I have it on my computer, "Human rights and equity are guiding values that are consistent with both Catholic social teaching and the Ontario Human Rights Code. These documents clearly define discrimination and include providing equity and inclusion as a lens for groups identified as being at risk of discrimination, and it specifically lists discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Given that this document produced by your own board, the policies of which you agreed to uphold as a trustee, how can you justify to me, as a stakeholder, as a parent, how can you justify not voting to raise the pride flag and creating a safe and inclusive environment for our LBGTQ+ students?" And before I let you answer, I need to be very clear that the HCDSP upholds that all people are created in the image and likeness of God, and as such, dignity is inherent. I've said this one before. So I've seen in letters that, you know, there's a fear that we need to protect other students from this teaching, so I don't want that as part of the answer. I want to know, this is part of the HCDSP board policy. How can you, as a trustee, sit there and consider not voting for this motion?
Ms. Power, I'll have to, I'll have to interject. It's, in this format, it's not appropriate. Excuse me, I have a floor. So I appreciate and understand your your passion and and your desire for those answers. Unfortunately, in this process at the board table, your presentation is for is to, is to, to for our edification. And then we are to ask clarifying questions. Really, it's not meant to be an open debate. So unfortunately, I'll have to to disallow that question. And we're gonna move on to trustee DeRosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not here to debate. I think I've had the the wonderful opportunity to to have a fulsome debate with Dr. Alexandra, and I'm not, I am now very appreciative to be able to put a face to a name. And I did enjoy our conversation. Thank you, Vitella. Again, it takes, it takes a lot of courage for young students to come here and plead their case.
So I feel really awful, but my maiden name is Vitella. I'm not sure where you're seeing that. Her name is Tay.
I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm seeing it on the screen.
It's okay.
Completely apologize. It's not a disrespect. I'm, I'm, I'm led by what I see on the, on.
I figured much with Miss, with trustee Antomasi, the same thing.
So I apologize. But I was saying, I'm not here to debate. I've had the the pleasure of fielding a call with Dr. Power and which gave me a lot of food for thought. I must admit, I am still very, very conflicted between, you know, the topic that we're talking about, the ugliness that has manifested itself, and I would, I would submit to you, doctor, that I've seen the ugliness from both sides of the spectrum. And so no one has a monopoly on being ugly. And it's completely, completely unacceptable. This, this, this question that we, that has been put to us is dividing the, 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 the community of a majority of people. And I say that with a certain amount of assurance because I've returned every call that was, that was sent to me. I have not necess- I've skimmed the seven hundred letters, but I have personally returned every call and even out of province, and I've spent, I remember one particular, one particular individual, I've spent an hour with him. So I am, here's what I'm, I'm, I'm looking at from, from what I see. This is a.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, point of order. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, trustee O'Hern Chernaud, what's your point of order?
I'm sorry, no disrespect to trustee DeRosa, but are we not at the point where we should be asking questions?
Yes, I would remind all trustees that we are to ask questions of clarification, which is on the content. And it's leading into some confusion, I think. So trustee, trustee DeRosa, trustee DeRosa, I'm speaking. Trustee DeRosa, trustee DeRosa. When, when the chair is making a ruling, nobody is to speak. So I would ask you to refrain from speaking at this moment. So my ruling to to trustee O'Hern Chernaud is yes, you're correct. I would ask you, trustee DeRosa, that you respect the rules and please move to your question.
May I speak now, Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
I have a reputation for. I have a reputation for being long-winded but deep. And eventually the question will come. But if I get interrupted this way, Mr. Chair, I don't, I'll never get to make the point which, which, and ask the question that I am at, that I'm headed to. So I would request the respect to let me finish my dissertation. And I will conclude as quickly as possible.
Yes, so trustee, so trustee DeRosa, there appears to be some confusion because there is to be no dissertation. There is to be no preamble. You are to ask a question. If the delegates require clarification, they will ask that of you. So please ask your question or you will cede the floor.
Mr. Chair, I cannot ask the question if I don't lead to it. And like other trustees, they have done exactly the same thing. They have taken the time to thank the delegates, rightfully so, and I would appreciate the same privilege.
Trustee DeRosa, you've been speaking for three to five minutes. I haven't timed you. Ask your question. Ask your question or cede the floor.
I will not cede the floor, Mr. Chair.
You will, if the chair orders you to cede the floor, you will cede the floor or you will be removed from the meeting.
Not be bullied in the manner in which I am trying to be used.
Trustee DeRosa, trustee DeRosa, you are out of order. Trustee DeRosa, you're out of order. I'm telling you, you're out of order. Trustee DeRosa.
Mr. Chair, you're.
Trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa, please ask your question. Trustee DeRosa, you're muted. Please ask your question.
Mr. Chair, I didn't, I did not mute myself.
Trustee DeRosa.
Respect, Mr. Mr. Chair. If anybody is muting me, I would respect to cease and desist because I have an obligation to my electors. I have an obligation to speak freely. And I need to be able to speak without being muzzled.
Trustee DeRosa, you have exactly one minute to ask your question or you will cede the floor. Please proceed.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, there's no such thing as a minute. You're creating rules and regulations that don't exist. You're not being equitable in allowing trustees to speak in a ma- in a proper manner.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Trustee DeRosa, this is your second warning. This is your second warning that you are out of order. Trustee DeRosa, I am ruling on a point of order. You are out of order. This is your second and final warning. Trustee Antomasi, trustee DeRosa is not following our meeting procedures. It is very clear. It's to your, you're to ask a clarifying question at this point. A memo was sent to all trustees highlighting that fact. So I am giving trustee DeRosa the respect and grace to ask his question within a reasonable amount of time, which at this point I deem to be one minute. Trustee DeRosa, please proceed.
You're out of order, Mr. Chair.
I will, I will, Mr. Chair, I will use my minute. But I will make the point that your role is to balance and facilitate debate, not to stuffle it or to limit it. So, Dr. Alexandra, I will lead to my question because we have already lost a lot of time trying to muzzle me. So tell me, Dr. Alexandra, this is what I struggle with. I understand that the symbol that, that these children are rallying behind. My question is very simple. Is, does it have to be that symbol or can it be something else? Because my fundamental, my fundamental issue is that we raise this symbol and then we don't follow through. And we need to follow through. We need to include. We need to teach these children how to defend themselves because they will not be with us the the rest of our lives. They will graduate, they'll be in, go into the world. And we need to give them the skills to stand up to the bullies and to the naysayers and to the people who don't wanna recognize them. They have to learn how to do that to some degree by themselves. And I struggle with the fact that the raising of a flag for thirty days is a very small gesture to address the problem that's really in the front of us. I am done, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I will, I will answer that, that question in two parts. And one, do I think that this flag has to be the symbol? And yes, I do, because it is, it is now, it's like making up a new Canadian flag at this point. It has been around and it is accepted by the LGBTQ two S plus community as being the accepted symbol of, of the pride flag. So it has to be this symbol. This is the symbol that that group chose and we need to use their symbol. So I I will answer that question with a full affirmative yes. To the second point of your question, you, what you're alluding to is a term called resilience, okay? And resilience is the ability to get back up once you are knocked down. And yes, I agree with you. It is so important to teach our children that no matter how they identify within their sexual orientation, no matter how they identify within gender, okay? But I am gonna give a stat to you. And I think this is an important stat to hear, that one in four LGBTQ students are physically harassed. Six in ten LGBT students are verbally abused. How, my friend, do we build resilience? The ability to get back up if we're, all we're doing is beating these children down? So the flag gets raised to say, at least in symbols, we are going to open our doors to you. Right? We are going to open up our hearts to learn how to grow and learn how to accept. It is the symbol of our willingness, just like you started tonight by saying, you don't know how all the terminology, but you are trying. And that is all we can come to the table to do as allies is we have to come to the table and we have to try. And by raising the flag, it says we are willing to try. We are willing to open our minds and our hearts to this conversation. And we are willing to provide you with a safe space so that if something happens to you, if someone hurts you in some way, you have someone to go to. You feel protected and therefore you can build resilience. So I would actually suggest to you, Mr. DeRosa, that raising this flag will allow these children to build resistance, resilience, so that you, Mr. DeRosa, so I, Mr. DeRosa, don't have to be there to pick them up again. Because they will actually have the ability to do it for themselves because they will feel loved and they will feel safe. And that is actually one of the social determinants of health and of mental health is an inclusion and acceptance in the home and school environment. And so by doing that, you will be positively contributing to the resilience and the mental health of these young people. You're frozen, so I hope you heard me. Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Alexander.
There you go. So up next, trustee O'Brien, I see you're in the queue, but trustee Rashi has not asked a question yet. So I'll put trustee Rashi in front of you and then you will be next.
No worries.
Trustee Rashi, you have the, Rashi, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to thank you for your presentation today. It was really amazing seeing people working for others, individuals and and supporting individuals and helping each other. That's what we're all here to do and we're all here to help each other and support each other. I just had a quick question and I do have another question following it, follow up. A quick question, we're talking about raising the flag. I heard trustee DeRosa saying raising the flag for thirty days. Is rising the, like, and I also had, saw a few trustees asking if raising the flag was only thing. Can you give us another examples which, other than raising the flag, that will actually support those students or? Yeah, those students? It can be answered by any individual.
I'll go ahead and speak about that. Maybe Tay can jump in after about what it means to her as a student, but I think the, the motion is talking about not just the flag, but the posters in the classrooms. And I think it's very important that those posters in classrooms are there so that the students recognize and understand that it is a safe space. Because at this point, based on the statistics, they're not feeling like it's safe. Teachers are not, we struggle. I'll say that. We struggle with having these types of conversations. And this has been a discussion with several priests in our dioceses as well, with what, what is it that, you know, we say? And one of them said, "Love is at the top. It doesn't matter anything else. We have to love these students. We have to love everybody. And if we come from a place of love, that's important." And those safe space posters show that. And the flag, to me outside, because June is known as Pride Month, because as we said in, in our presentation, that the flag has been around for so many years and what it represents to this community. You know, we, we have not even had a rainbow or Pride Day in our, in our board, right? The kids all the time, I'm, I'm going out, you know, not that I can go out now, but Walmart, Winters, wherever, orange shirt, blue shirt, pink shirt, you know, what else, Tay? Like, there's so many. And so I think that that flag flying outside the building is going to really represent. So other than the flag, obviously the posters, we are in alignment with that as well in the classrooms. Did you wanna add anything?
Flag is just the beginning. We need to educate the teachers and the students on these things. And it's a visual reminder to just be kind to everyone and also specifically to the members of the two S LGBTQ plus community.
Trustee Rashi, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you for your point, but I also have another question. I know, I know it's mentioned in the Bible to love each other and to care about each other. And that's what we teach in schools, that we're all equal, no matter our race, our gender, or anything that can differ us from any, from each other. But another point, we are at the end of the day, a Catholic board and a Catholic school board. And here, like, we are, we are in a meeting for the Board of Trustees for a Catholic school board. Any, anything that has to be approved or anything that has to be done in a Catholic board has to be has to be accepted by the Catholic beliefs and, and, and the Catholic faith. Because that's what we stand by. That's what, that's what differs us from the public board, correct? The, the difference between us and, and the public board is the Catholic belief and the Catholic teaching. And for example, the religion classes that we have in schools. Something like this, like, in order, in order for it to be accepted, no, sorry, not accepted, but, but advertised by our board has to be has to be connected and approved by the Catholic beliefs because that's what we stand by. So is there anything that you, you can use in the Catholic beliefs that mention the acceptance of this belief? Other than accepting all individuals, no matter what the race they are and anything that differs them? Other than this point, is there other point that can support that from Catholic perspective raising the flag?
Um, I, do you wanna do that, Alex, or? I will start and I'm sure you'll add on. I first wanna, I wanna flip that. You followed up by saying, other than, other than the fact that in, you know, Genesis one twenty-seven, we are told that we are all created in the image and likeness of God and as such dignity is inherent at all. Other than, why, why are you trying to specifically take out people who identify as LGBTQ plus from that? Why, why are you needing to differentiate? I, I think that is a point of reflection here. So that's point number one. Point number two is that in the Canadian Conference of Catholic Bishops and the document published in twenty eleven, they, they very strongly suggested that the, those exercising a ministry in the church or working in pastoral care of young people shall be especially careful not to perpetrate injustice, hatred, malice in speech or action against LGBT persons. And I, I would be careful when we say things like, what can we find in the Bible other than the point that God loves all of us equally? And we know these people are suffering and we have an opportunity to alleviate their suffering. What is more Catholic than that? So I, I'll give that back to you, Michaela. No, no, I'm gonna give that back to Michaela because I'm sure she has something to add on. But I do.
You haven't understood, you haven't understood my point. You haven't heard my point clearly. I said something, you, you're explaining something else. I said, other than the fact that we have to love each other. I did not say about God loving anyone. I mentioned us. I, I love all individuals. We all love each other and we all respect each other. And we all know that. But raising a flag, this is a special, this, we don't raise the flag for every single type of individuals. Like, I'm personally, I'll speak personally. I'm from a different background than everyone else. I, I'm not saying raise my flag. This is, this, I'm not talking about God. I'm not talking about anyone. I'm talking about individuals. So you, you're just, you didn't understand my point.
But do we, are you persecuted based on, I, I don't know you and I'm, but my question is, would, or I, I might, I don't want to question and I apologize, Mr. Daly, but I would flip that. but I would flip that and say, depending where you're from, are you, are you persecuted in, in our community because of where you came from? And I really hope you are not, and if so, then I will be there to raise your flag, my friend. And I do think we have to recognize that we do support many other groups. As, as Michaela very, very pointedly pointed out, we've worn orange shirts to recognize Indigenous residential schools and the trauma, the generational trauma from that. We wear odd socks for Down Syndrome, we wear blue shirts for autism, we do do these things, we have a precedent. So that I, I don't think that this is, is any different. And I, I think it is a very important symbol of our acceptance and love of the OBTQ community. Michaela, you may have something to add to that.
I was just thinking about, you know, some of the, the letters that are in the package for this meeting and want to draw your attention to the, to the very lengthy one from the bishops and the Institute for Catholic Education and how they talk about these kinds of things, you know. I, like Dr. Power, I don't know your background, but we allow Muslim students to wear their hijab in our schools. So as she said, why are we trying to remove a whole community of people that are in our schools? Whether that be staff, whether that be students, or whether that be even children that are in that community because their parents are, they've got two moms or two dads. Imagine that child, how they feel when they're told that their parents are sinners. So like, it doesn't make sense, these, this is, this goes way beyond the actual people that identify as two S OBTQ. It spans from there. You know, one of the things we, I would never say to one of my students in religion class that is Muslim and said, oh, you know, my family practices polygamy, I'm not going to turn around and say, oh, well, you know, that is horrible and that's a sin and that, you know, shouldn't be happening. So what I don't understand is the same with Alex, it just kind of feels like there are these arguments to, to physically remove the, this community from our classrooms, from our schools. And we don't do that based on religion, so why are we doing that based on gender and sexual identity? It doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Up we have, left we have trustee O'Brien, I remind trustees that this is not debate, this is to ask clarifying questions. At eight point one on the agenda, there can be actions that would enter into debate, plus we have an action item on. So please refrain from entering into debate and ask a clarifying question. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. This goes to Michaela. Michaela, I have section ninety-three of the Constitution, but says subsection one, nothing in any law shall prejudicially affect any right or privilege with respect to denominational rights. Subsection one. Then on page seven, you say, the human rights code prevails over separate score rights when it comes to students' sexual orientation. So I'm just wondering, do you have a reference that I don't have?
You were given that in your training that I found on the HCDSB website, you had that training done last year by the manager, the senior manager of Human Rights and Equity, and that is where I got that information from. Where for staff, it applies to staff, but it does not apply to students. Meaning you, as a Catholic board, would not hire someone who is Catholic, but for students, the Human Rights Code applies. So if a student asked for a bathroom that is gender neutral, they are allowed to have that.
Thank you.
And I will clarify that in the, in that document, the racism and discrimination responding with faith, hope and love, human rights and equity are guiding values, I've said that before, reaffirming the dignity of every individual, as well as the Human Rights Code, which safeguards students and staff from discrimination based on protected grounds. So, you know, I, I, I think we would be going down a very, very slippery slope if we try to say that religious interpretation of OBTQ rights trumps the human rights as laid out in our Charter of Rights.
Thank you, we have no further questions, so I would like to thank our, our delegates for your presentation, all your hard work that you, you put together and your, your compassionate support for your cause. A response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item eight point one, thank you.
Thank you, Taya.
Thank you.
We are now on item five point four, supporting our diverse school communities. Our third delegation will be presented by Ms. Glavada, Ms. Minty and Ms. Shallow. Are you prepared to start?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Director Daly, Chair Murphy, Vice Chair Duarte, all trustees and superintendents. Our names are Eleanor Glavada, Hannah Minty and Neve Shallow. And we are all HCDSB alumni, having attended St. Joseph's and St. Thomas Aquinas, graduating in two thousand and eighteen. My name is Eleanor. During my time as a student, I thrived in each school I attended and was happy in what I personally felt was a safe, inclusive environment. As I've grown older and reflected on my time at STA, I realized that the people who fostered such an environment were a few specific staff members and the students I chose to surround myself with. However, I know my experience was not universal. You have been given the important job of deciding whether or not you will have pride flags added to the school's flagpoles, as well as whether or not teachers will post safe space posters in their classrooms, which could have an immensely positive impact for all members of the HCDSB community. The symbolism behind these actions will enable two S OBTQ plus students, as well as any other student, to feel safe at school and as though they can approach staff members with any of their concerns while at school. From my perspective, this is a small step towards inclusion that may make or break a child's experience while they are in school and by extension, in your care. Your mission states that you are responsible for promoting student achievement and wellbeing, as well as promoting a positive school climate and the prevention of bullying. Pride flags and safe space posters would be a wonderful step towards ensuring these responsibilities are fulfilled. What may seem offensive or un-Catholic to some of you could be a matter of life and death for two S OBTQ plus students in your care. Two S OBTQ plus youth face roughly fourteen times the risk of suicide and substance abuse than their heterosexual peers. All of us are children of God and created in God's image. The loss or attempted suicide of any child is a tragedy. And as Catholic individuals, we should be doing all that we can to prevent that. Encouraging students to be themselves is not enough unless you can ensure that any and all students feel safe doing so. Refusal to enact these small practices that will make two S OBTQ plus youth feel safer while at school is blatant homophobia and fosters a climate where hate can and is encouraged to grow. Not having the experience of open and honest conversations in my high school classrooms did a disservice when I entered post-secondary. Such small actions can be a matter of life and death for two S OBTQ plus youth. And as Catholic individuals who often speak about the sanctity of human life, you should feel compelled to protect the lives of two S OBTQ plus youth in your care. You must make the choice to move forward as a school board that no longer fosters hate towards any marginalized group. I would also like to mention that a petition I created in support of this motion received over seven hundred signatures. And I would like to take a moment of this presentation to read to you some of the meaningful comments that have been posted on the petition website. One user wrote, I was a student in the HCDSB and could not come out as myself until I went to university. This is important, this is life and death. Another user commented, I have students and coworkers who need and deserve this support. These comments are just two of several, but truly demonstrate the impact and importance behind this motion. Overall, this decision would greatly impact the reputation surrounding Catholic schools in Ontario. And it is your decision to make on how you will protect your reputation and propel forward Jesus's most important teaching, to love thy neighbor as thyself.
My name is Hannah Minty and my brother currently attends St. Thomas Aquinas. Since my time in the Halton Catholic District School Board, I've been attending Carleton University in Ottawa, studying human rights and social justice with a minor in women's and gender studies. I'm writing this letter to urge the board trustees to pass the motion for supporting our diverse school community and to express my disappointment towards the potential of the motion being denied. While my experience at Halton Catholic District School Board schools was positive for the most part, it is important to recognize that not all students share the same experience. It is crucial to understand the privilege that I hold as a straight, white, cisgender woman and how this privilege translates to everyday experiences that occur in a school setting. My privilege means that I tend to feel safe and comfortable in the majority of environments I come across. Please, understand that this is not the case for most marginalized individuals, especially members of the two S OBTQ plus community. Unfortunately, all of these factors play a major role in how individuals are perceived and treated by society, but also their peers at school. Not passing this motion creates a precedent, a very harmful one that contributes to hate, isolation and shame. It shows staff and students that the exclusion of the two S OBTQ plus community is okay. It creates a toxic and closed learning environment where certain opinions may not be considered as valid or as important as others. It emphasizes the differences between individuals and pushes people further apart, rather than bringing them together. We live in a world where silence speaks much louder than any words ever could. You claim to focus on achieving, believing and belonging whilst providing your students and staff with the tools for realizing their fullest potential. How can you provide a sense of belonging if you are not actively taking action to create an inclusive and safe environment for those staff and students? How can you be providing staff and students the tools they need for realizing their full potential by failing to recognize an entire group of those same individuals? As leaders in education, you all know that the Ontario Human Rights Code protects marginalized groups and states every person has a right to equal treatment as well as freedom from discrimination and harassment. In my opinion, flying the pride flag during the month of June and putting up safe space posters around the schools within the board demonstrates a dedication to enforcing the Ontario Human Rights Code and ultimately provides a visual reminder that discrimination and harassment are not tolerated within the Halton Catholic District School Board. The reputation of the Catholic school system in Ontario is already one of outdated beliefs and exclusion, privileging certain groups over others. Many are even questioning why we have Catholic schools at all. This is a chance to show that the Halton Catholic District School Board is a valuable, inclusive, loving and welcoming community to put our words into action. Once again, I urge you to pass the motion brought forth by Nicole Hotchkiss and fly the pride flag during June and to hang safe space posters in all Halton Catholic District School Board classrooms. As a Halton Catholic District School Board alumna, I understand the impact this motion will have on two S OBTQ plus individuals in your school system. I will be very disappointed if this motion is not passed, and I know many other alumni, staff, students and other members of the community will be as well.
My name is Neve Shallow. Nicole Hotchkiss's bravery has inspired me to speak up and emphasize to you, the board trustees, how important it is to create safe spaces within classrooms. After watching Nicole's presentation and the responses from the school board trustees, I felt compelled to speak on this issue as I have experienced feeling unsafe myself within my elementary and high school years. The purpose of Nicole's project goes beyond the personal belief of whether one's sexuality is wrong or immoral. This initiative is to make sure that all students feel welcome and included, no matter who they are attracted to. School is supposed to be a safe place for every people, but opposing this request is doing the exact opposite. As a part of the two S OBTQ plus community myself, I wish with all my heart that this was a conversation when I was in school in Oldham. I can confidently say that if it was, I wouldn't have had the discriminating experiences that I did from both students and staff. In elementary school, I was told by a teacher that he didn't like the way I looked, based on the fact that I wore men's clothing. Receiving these comments at such a young age made me feel unwelcome, unsafe and obviously impacted my self-esteem. In high school, a member of the administration team pulled me into their office to discuss appropriate prom behavior. None of my peers were spoken to about said behavior prior to our school's prom. Once I found out that this was an isolated incident, I realized that it had to do with my sexual orientation and who I had chosen to bring to prom. Due to my openness about my sexuality in high school, this administrator felt as though they could single me up. This caused concern going forward about possible repercussions for attending prom with someone I love. This comment from someone in power at the school not only made me feel as though school was an unsafe place, but made me feel as though any concerns I brought forward would not be treated in the same manner as if one of my heterosexual peers were to come forward with a similar issue. To myself and a number of two S OBTQ plus individuals, the pride flag is a symbol of recognition and acceptance. This visual representation would remind staff and students that the Halton Catholic District School Board is a safe and accepting place. Within my years as a student in the Halton Catholic District School Board system, I've been called countless homophobic slurs while at school. Given my prior experiences with administration, I felt redundant to report them as I failed to receive support from the administration in the past. These experiences have stayed with me to this day. Passing an addition such as this one is a small step towards creating a safer school environment by giving a physical sign of respect and support to the two S OBTQ plus students. As a former student, I feel as though I have the duty to make sure that the next generation of Halton Catholic District School Board students enter a school that is better than when I had graduated. I hope you can all understand how important it is for the motion to be passed. High school is hard for everyone, but the two S OBTQ plus students such as myself are treated differently because of who we love. We are not asking for a complete change in personal philosophy. Instead, we are asking for tolerance, love, acceptance and respect, just as the Pope has asked of all Catholics. I understand that this is a Catholic school board, and with that, religious philosophies are often involved and get skewed. In the previous board meeting, several trustees were quick to speak about the Bible and Catholic beliefs. I would like to mention John four, seven through eight. Beloved, let us love one another because love is from God. Everyone who loves is born of God and knows God. I would like to make it clear that I respect each and every one of the board members here, even if our perspectives on this issue differ. I understand that your faith is a part of you, but please understand that being gay is a part of so many of the students that you're supposed to be protecting. As outlined in the Education Act, you are elected to promote student achievement, foster wellbeing, prevent bullying and evaluate the effectiveness of policies. All of this is possible and can be achieved through tolerance, respect and education on what the pride flag really means, which is to reflect adversity and support the two S OBTQ plus community. There are many people watching and waiting to hear your responses, and these votes will not be forgotten. So please, truly ask yourself, as this question was posed to me countless times within my school experience, what would Jesus do?
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions? Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and great presentation, really, really convincing, very close to the heart. And I want to say, first of all, to Niamh, did I say your name right?
It's Neve.
Neve?
Yes.
I, I've, I feel horrible about what happened to you, that principal, that teacher were out of line. And I pray to God you will be healed of that. Very hard to speak to that, and I think you're very brave to do that. One question for Eleanor, and Eleanor, on first page, it does say that two S OBTQ plus youth are faced roughly fourteen times the risk of suicide and substance abuse than their heterosexual peers. Can you tell us where you're getting those statistics from?
Yes, I can, that specific statistic is from the Canadian Mental Health Association. Yeah, so.
Thank you.
I can send it to you if you'd like, but.
I believe you, I could check that one out, thank you.
Any follow-ups, trustee O'Brien?
No.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, all three of you, for your presentation. My question is for Nim, I'm going to say your name wrong.
It's Neve, it's okay.
I apologize. How did you feel when you read those letters?
So there were a number of letters, I believe it got into the hundreds. There was a lot of support, I believe the majority of them were support. So it's very comforting to know that the current generation, and I think that a few of the letters even express their children expressing their support for the motion, so therefore future generations.
so therefore, future generations have a vested interest in making sure this passes. You know, I myself have a number of individuals that support me, and I know they're watching, including my family and rugby team. So I feel very blessed to have that community around me. That being said, there were a few letters against that I found particularly hateful. I would go as far to say borderline hate speech, and I do understand that there was, gosh, I want to say about 200 letters. But in order to get sort of a better feeling, I understand I can't pose questions to the trustees of how this has really impacted me reading these statements, I'd like to pull up on page 199, just a quick quote here. "It is not that his command to love thy enemy, but while the extreme case is to love an enemy..." Take ISIS, for example. Would we want to fly their flag to show them our love? So that alone, the association with such a hateful, violent terrorist group, is enough to, you know, make somebody feel, as myself, being a part of the LGBT community, very hated from my own, like, community where I live. A number of the more hateful letters sent in were actually anonymous too. So it's interesting to see how people might have some sort of holdback from placing their name at the bottom because they know deep down that it is hateful and a little offside, some of the comments. So while I'm lucky to have a supportive community around me, some of the letters that were proposed and actually placed in the agenda package were quite impactful in the sense of harming my own self-worth, to say the least. Thank you.
And I am sorry that that happened and that you felt that way, I really am. And I am an ally.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions, trustees? Seeing that there are none, I'd like to thank you for your presentation. Excellent presentation, and it's always so valuable to hear people's lived experiences. It really brings the emotion and the intellectual together. So we thank you for being so eloquent in your presentation. A response to your delegation will be dealt with under Agenda Item 8.1.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next delegation, 5.5, Flags and Symbols in Catholic Schools, will be presented by Mr. Mandich and Father Roginsky. You will have 10 minutes. Please begin.
Father Roginsky?
Yes, I'm trying to get in. Okay, Fariana Roginsky, pastor from Gabriel's Church in Burlington. Throughout history, and even in the present, people who identify as members of the LGBTQIA+ community have been the victims of bullying, harassment, and violence. This is completely unacceptable. Pope Francis, in his book The Name of God is Mercy, says, "I am glad that we are talking about homosexual people because before all worlds comes the individual person in his holiness and dignity. And people should not be defined only by their sexual tendencies. Let us not forget that God loves all His creatures and we are destined to receive His infinite love." As you can see in the Catechism, paragraphs 2357 through 2359, outline Catholic teaching on homosexuality. Infideli de positum and John Paul II wrote the following about the Catechism. "The Catechism of the Catholic Church, which I approved 25 June and the publication of which I today order by virtue of my apostolic authority, is a statement of the Church's faith and of Catholic doctrine, attested to or illumined by sacred scripture, the apostolic tradition, and the Church's majesty. I declare it to be a sure norm for teaching the faith and thus a valid and legitimate instrument for ecclesial communion. From the Catechism, it is clear that the Church teaches that all persons are called to chastity, including single persons with homosexual inclinations."
Thank you, Father. Everyone hears me? Yes. This brings us to the final issue of the LGBTQ+ rainbow flag, which is not a neutral symbol of a group of people, but a symbol that promotes a worldview with elements that are incompatible with the Catholic faith. What is the rainbow flag? It first flew in San Francisco on June 25, 1978. It had eight colors, two more than today's version, and was designed by Gilbert Baker. The original eight-stripe flag designed by Baker had hot pink, representing sex, which was subsequently removed because it was difficult to source fabric of that color. From its inception, the rainbow flag was connected to the positive affirmation of the active homosexual lifestyle. According to the Catholic faith, any sex outside of the sacrament of marriage is a sin and goes against her moral teachings, as highlighted in the Catechism. In the definitions from the June 2016 procedural bylaws of the board, 2.5, "Board" means the Halton Catholic District School Board, which in accordance with the Act is a Roman Catholic school board in union with the Sea of Rome. From the Catholic District School Board Policy Number I-22, adopted March 26, 1996, Principles, "The Board is committed to cultivating the special characteristics of Catholic education to teach the authentic truths of the faith in line with the Magisterium of the Church and in cooperation with the bishops in the exercise of their teaching office. The Ministry of Education recognizes the rate of Catholic schools to provide Catholic education. Catholic school ratepayers expect that Catholic faith and culture permeates everything that happens within the Catholic school." The first principle forms the basis of my objection to flying the flag in question. The Board, in its own list of principles, promises to teach the authentic truths of the faith in line with the Magisterium. St. John Paul II's Catechism states clearly that any sexual activity outside of the sacrament of marriage is a sin and all single people, including homosexuals, are called to chastity. The rainbow flag, next slide, please. The rainbow flag was originally designed with a stripe to represent sex and is associated with, among other things, showing pride in an active homosexual lifestyle contradicting Church teaching on homosexuality. Recently, on March 15, 2021, the CDF, with input from Pope Francis, responded to whether or not the Church has the power to give a blessing to unions of persons of the same sex. The response was that the Church cannot bless same-sex unions. In the response from Pope Francis's CDF, the following was written, and I quote, "We are more important to God than all of the sins that we can commit, but He does not and cannot bless sin. Perhaps the emblem of Courage International, an apostolate that ministers to those that identify as LGBTQ+ Catholics but wish to live according to Church teaching, would be more appropriate." Next slide. "I would be the first to support the flying of this flag as a sign that the Church thinks of all her children and tries to bring them towards the way, the truth, and the life Jesus Christ, regardless of how they identify." Next slide, please. I'd like to begin... I'd like to begin by addressing some of the rationale provided in favor of displaying the so-called pride flag at HCDSB schools at the meeting on April 6. As much of the arguments presented as fact were either misleading or false, a false flag operation, so to speak. While surveys are useful, the data presented has to be rejected until the methodology of the survey, population selection, sample size, population demographics, definition of terms, and other factors that can shape results rather than reflect actual situations. The gesture was presented as inexpensive or free. However, at Flags Unlimited, for example, they charge about $70 for a 36-inch by 72-inch so-called pride flag. With 50-plus schools in the HCDSB, the price already extends into thousands. With many of the Canadian flags at our schools already in that tattered state, which runs contrary to Government of Canada protocols on flying the flag, it seems not only expensive, but out of place and disrespectful to the country we live in. The Board has adopted a bullying prevention and intervention policy that commits it to the safe, caring, equitable, and inclusive school environment in order to maximize the learning potential of all students. The word "inclusive" is defined as including everything or all types of people. An allegation was made that slurs were being uttered in classroom settings. If this is truly going on, it is important that these matters are addressed in the manner laid out in the policy. Indeed, the same policy defines bullying as aggressive behavior and specifically includes homophobic comments, among the many forms of bullying, a clear indication that this behavior is neither welcome nor tolerated at school and beyond. Anecdotal red herrings don't seem to hold water. I'm paraphrasing from the YouTube transcript of last meeting where knowing someone does not agree with my definition of identity can be off-putting. In a free society, things are off-putting. Claiming to be offended by something that is not intrinsically offensive does not constitute bullying. This is especially the case when offense is taken to something as universally truthful as Catholic teaching on human sexuality. If bullying is occurring, it ought to be investigated according to the procedures in the applicable policy. If the policy is not being enforced, then staff, administrators, and indeed, this board ought to be held accountable for that failure. As a parent of four kids in the Halton Catholic schools, I'm concerned about any allegations of bullying. My own son came home in September of last year with a gash on his face that has left a physical scar. As a citizen, however, I'm skeptical that decisions based on fears and anecdotes can form the basis of sound policy. You, as trustees, might pause to consider your responsibility to the board, which the bylaw defines as a Roman Catholic school board in union with the Sea of Rome. Decisions ought to be based in Catholic teaching and guided by evidence. But hearsay and vague allegations should never form the basis for decision-making by the trustees. Indeed, the policy is clear on the duties of U.S. trustees. Promote a positive school climate and the prevention of bullying promoting student achievement and well-being. We must look at promoting less as sloganeering and more as creating and executing policy that ensure that types of climate, that type of climate that allows student achievement and well-being. Before the Board considers flag waving as a first step, we ought to enforce the current policy and then seek to learn everything to the extent, the scope, and nature of bullying within the HCDSB. I'd suggest the Board first compile statistics on numbers of bullying incidents by school, by age, grade of students, by race, ethnic origin, religion, and sexuality. Such a measured approach would not only affirm the problems faced by students suffering from same-sex attraction, but could also bring to light less vocal, but perhaps more prevalent and serious types of bullying. Given that this policy has been in place since 2012, there should be also enough data on incidents of bullying to indicate whether or not the policy has been effective in dealing with and reducing all forms of bullying. The goal ought to be a policy that ensures safety of all students. The irony is that the motion in question is to take the divisive stance, display a symbol which runs contrary to our faith. Flying flags rooted in lifestyles contrary to Catholic teaching are hashtag gestures that mean little and solve nothing. A measured, data-driven approach to bullying is a solution that truly costs nothing but results in safety and inclusion for not only students suffering from same-sex attraction, but all members of the Catholic school community who feel unwelcome and unsafe. It seems that present trends and discourse in Canadian culture are an unstoppable current, and it would be easiest to go with the flow. But nothing of value is achieved easily. I'd like to end with a quote by G.K. Chesterton that challenges us to do what everyone else is doing. "A dead thing goes with the stream, but only a living thing goes against it." Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. We do have some questions lined up. First, we have Trustee DeRosa. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How do we reconcile the symbolism of the flag, which is important to these kids, with the effectiveness of keeping them safe, which is my, frankly, my primary concern? And I want to make sure that if we do this, that it's followed through. The other thing is, I think I asked a question before, does it have to be this flag or can it be something else? I don't know that yet, but the fundamental issue is, will flying a flag for 30 days fix the root of the problem? I want to fix the root of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I agree with you. That problem should be fixed. I'm against bullying of anyone under any circumstance. And the flying of that flag will not fix any problem. It only brought divisiveness into this community. It only brought attacks from both sides. Right? There's a way to speak respectfully and there's a way to speak disrespectfully. And what's been going on in the last few weeks is not good. So this flag is not a cause that is unifying Catholics. Should we work on bullying? 100%. I know myself of, you hear anecdotes of someone that had, you know, same-sex attraction disowned by their parents. That is anti-Catholic, that is anti-Christian, that is wrong. We have to welcome everyone, but the point of Catholic schools is to bring people towards Catholic teaching. And this flag does not help that cause.
Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up question?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I don't, but I was rather short. I hope you acknowledge that.
I acknowledge and appreciate your frankness. We're friends again. Up next, we have Trustee Agnew. Sorry? Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question, there was a comment made with respect to red herrings. I'm trying to understand that a little bit more. So is the implication there that the stories that have been shared tonight or in some of these letters are made up? What, where is the reference to the red herring coming from? Because it's a pretty strong statement to make, I'm just curious.
It's just a statement that we need to see data, so there should be scientific approach to this problem. We've got to find the numbers of bullying incidents and then attack whatever group is being bullied. We've got to find exactly where the problem is and fix it that way, not with, again, useless hashtag gestures or useless flag flying.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Please, go ahead.
So then, for the, so we did hear from the students who are being bullied, and they told us exactly why they're being bullied, and that is because they are from the LGBTQ community. So again, I'm just, when you say factual data, that, I mean, there is a lot of data, but again, that feels to me that you're dismissing the stories and the experiences that have been shared, and you can't put data on that.
When I say data, I just mean an actual scientific study, numbers, number of incidences. I'm not saying the stories didn't happen, but it's like me telling the story of what happened to me. Is that representative of what happens to every croat on earth? No, it happened to me, and I can tell you that story, right?
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. You're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I cheese. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, gentlemen. Hard to swim upstream, for sure. To Father Janus, the word sinful has been mentioned a few times tonight, so just to clarify from your part of the presentation. According to you, it isn't gender identity or gender orientation that the Church considers sinful, but the lack of chastity, whatever gender you are. Is that right?
Correct. It's not about the gender or orientation. Everybody's accepted and loved by God. It's about actions, behaviors that can be sinful. And these actions, if they are sinful, need to be condemned. And they are clearly outlined as such in the Bible and in the teaching of the Church, in the tradition, and even in the recent documents of the Church. So we have to distinguish homosexual or LGBTQ person and from the behavior of the person who is not condemned, is loved and called to holiness, called to sanctification, called to chase life. And it doesn't matter if it is heterosexual, homosexual, or some other orientation. We are all called to chase life. Then engaging in sinful actions, like for example, same-sex sexual acts, would be sinful, or so-called... acts would be sinful, or so-called marriages, homosexual marriages, are sinful by nature. And it is clear in the catechism. So actions that are not in line with Ten Commandments, with what Jesus teaches, need to be clearly stated as such. And we have also done the light. If we pursue these kind of actions, we endanger our salvation. So the Church's main preoccupation is to lead people to heaven, lead people to salvation. And if they are on the path that will lead them astray, they need to be corrected. And if we fail to do that, then we are also to blame for it. And we are participating in this kind of sinful attitude. So I want to clearly state this distinction between a person and an action of the person. The person, whatever orientation this person is, is to be loved. And Jesus died for all people of all time. At the same time, Jesus calls everybody to holiness.
Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up question?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for your delegation. I do have a question. I've heard a couple times and I'm having some trouble understanding this. But where on the flag does it say it's about sex?
So the pink stripe, the pink stripe used to signify sex. It was taken out because they could not source fabric of that color. You can look that up. One source is an article on parade.com by Lindsay Lowe. It lists the eight colors, what they all mean. So that's why I said it's not only about sex. It also means life, healing, sunlight. No one's against sunlight. The problem is when you are using a flag that was originally connected to sex, you are you are flying a flag that is connected to the affirmation of an active homosexual life. Right? That's the problem here. That contradicts Catholic teaching. If it wasn't that, if it was just about having same-sex attraction, I would say fly the flag.
I would like also to speak to that because in the previous presentations, it is always underlined that it is a sign of inclusivity, of acceptance, and so on, diversity. But this flag does not stand only for that. Unfortunately, this flag stands also for attitudes and behaviors and ideology that is contrary to the Catholic teaching, like promotion of homosexual marriages, adoption of children by homosexual people. Also homosexual active behavior of engaging in homosexual acts. We cannot support something that represents that. So this flag is not, it doesn't have just one meaning. It is ambiguous. If we can accept the meaning of inclusivity, but we cannot accept the other meaning that contradicts specifically Catholic teaching on sexuality and Catholic morality on sexuality, we cannot accept it. We would give a wrong message to the whole world and to everybody who will see that. And most of the Catholics passing by the school and seeing this flag in the school would think that we accept the homosexual lifestyle and what it represents. We cannot do that. We would be a cause of scandal and misleading people rather than leading to heaven, as I said before. So it is not a sign of unity. It is ambiguous sign and should not be used. I would propose rather Sacred Heart of Jesus. And the month of June is dedicated to the Sacred Heart of Jesus. And then the Sacred Heart of Jesus is all-inclusive. Everybody's included in this heart and at the same time called to a higher standard, to holiness.
Follow-up question?
Yes, please proceed.
I'm sorry, Father. I'm having a hard time. You're saying, you just mentioned about the Sacred Heart of Jesus implying that flag. But I hear things like so-called marriages, homosexuality, chaste. I think, I don't think that the flag is saying that we're teaching our students to go out and have sex. That's not, that's not the intent of this, and that's definitely not what it symbolizes. I just, I have a hard time in hearing some of the things that are being said because basically saying that we accept you, but, and I don't remember anywhere in the Bible where it says, Jesus loves you, but. So that's where I'm having a hard time. And maybe, you know, I guess it's just, you know, again, I go back to you, the comments are made that it's saying that we're saying to go have sex. We don't say to the heterosexual kids, go out and have sex, do we? So why are we, why are we calling out this particular group of students?
Everybody is called to chastity, as was mentioned in our, in our presentation. Doesn't matter what kind of, or sexual orientation they have. But the flag, as you said, does not represent only what you were saying in the previous presentations. It is ambiguous. Because of the activity all over the world of the LGBTQ plus community, it stands also for immoral behaviors. I don't say that you are encouraging by putting it out, but this sign is so ambiguous, they cannot use it as an effective sign in the Catholic context because it is misleading.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hern Zernato, you're up next.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Mandich. I just have a quick question.
Mandich.
Mandich, I apologize. I should know better. They have a hard time saying my last three names. So, Mr. Mandich, in your, in your delegation, you speak a lot about data, which is right up my alley. I'm a data girl. So I guess my question to you would be, how many students in our Halton Catholic District School Board that maybe don't feel safe would be a value-added number? How many kids would that take, in your opinion, to create a good data sample to make change? I guess that's my question.
I'm not sure. That's not my expertise. Would you have a number?
One, any, one or more. Any child that feels unsafe in our schools is too many. So that would be my answer. But you spoke to the surveys and saying they're anecdotal and there was no data. So my question to you would be, what would be that data sample that would be value-added for you?
Well, I would say the more, the better. The more data you have, the better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All the trustees who've wanted to speak have spoken. We're on the second round. So up we have next trustee Agnew, DeRosa, and Guzzo. I would ask you all to remain focused on clarifying questions. And no questions should be argumentative or meant for debate. So please focus all of your questions on the information that was presented. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
I was not, I was overlooked. I didn't have a chance to ask a question of this particular delegation.
My apologies, trustee Antamasie. You have the floor. You haven't spoken yet. Please proceed.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mandich, Father, thank you very much. One point of clarification that I'm asking from Father is that perhaps the Church is, is the Church saying we can love all children, but we cannot love the sin or support the sin? Would it be correct in saying that?
Absolutely, you are correct. Yes, we love the children, every person in his, her, human dignity. We are all created in God's image. But we cannot love the sin. If it is a sinful behavior, it has to be described as such. And as a sin, it is endangering somebody's salvation, and we cannot stand for it. So we distinguish a person from the act. The person is loved. But if it is a sin, it has to be condemned as a sin.
So another supplementary question, Mr. Chair. So would it, would it suffice to say then that the flag in itself represents a lifestyle which under the Church's doctrine would be considered sin, so we cannot support that?
I would agree with this statement, yes. It represents also a lifestyle that is contrary to the message of Jesus, to the message of gospel, which calls us to holiness and sanctity and chastity. But homosexual lifestyle does not represent that. So that's the additional meaning that was not mentioned in the previous presentations. If it meant only inclusiveness and acceptance, that would be fine, but it doesn't. It doesn't. And the cultural fact, when we look at the flag, it comes also to our mind, all these things that the LGBTQ community all over the world represents, also the Pride marches that are immoral in many things that they show, that are quite like almost close to pornography, which is offensive to every Catholic the way it is presented. We cannot, as a Church, support this kind of behaviors. It has to be clearly stated. We are for holiness. We are for the road to heaven. We are for chastity, not for immorality.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor. Sorry, trustee Agnew, trustee Agnew, my apologies.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So just a question back to data for a moment. And unlike my fellow trustee, trustee O'Hern Zernata, data is not my favorite thing. But I understand and appreciate the need for data. It helps inform our decisions. It helps us to make important decisions. So I do understand that. So having said that, and when you mentioned before, if the data was there. So, you know, what if the data came back to support what we're talking about? What if the data came back to say, this is why these students are being bullied? This is exactly what is happening to them. This is what is being said, and this is the consequence of that behavior. What happens if that, if that data were to come back and it were to say that this is exactly the cause of what is happening? Is it then okay to fly the flag because we have the data to support that that's where the root of the bullying is happening?
Number one, I would enforce your existing policy because if bullying is happening, but you have a policy against bullying. So either the policy doesn't work or you're not enforcing it. Those are the two options. Flying a flag has never solved the problem anywhere. All that it has brought to the Halton Catholic District School Board is division and problems and arguing and name-calling and people afraid to raise their voices for fear of losing their job. This is not a normal debate, and this is not the right thing to do in the middle of a pandemic.
Thank you for your, thank you for your answer.
Whoever, whoever has their microphone, please mute. Better respect for our, respect for our delegates. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A pretty middle-of-the-road guy, I must admit. I can't quote scripture. And I look at things from, from really a practical standpoint. And frankly, I, I really don't want to get into the bedrooms of the of the HCDSB ward, okay? So that's, that helps put me in a particular position. Here's what I'm concerned about. I have an urge to really fix and take care of these kids long-term, real substantive solutions. And when I'm looking at the time that we're discussing for the purpose of flying a flag in the conditions of, in a pandemic condition, all we will end up doing, unfortunately, is putting up a flag that may end up making a political statement before anything else. How much of this is politics? I can't shake that feeling. And if it is politics, then the direction is clear to me. I don't want to argue about, you know, scripture. I am, you know, probably not a very good Catholic in that sense. And Jesus will decide who I am when the time comes, and I will, I will take that decision. I do not want to do politics on the backs of the kids. So can somebody, trustees, whoever can address that question for me and give me some comfort?
Trustee DeRosa, it's not appropriate to ask intent, and it's not appropriate to ask intent of trustees. If you would like, Mr. Mandich, to, to comment on your statement, I think that's appropriate, or Father.
Either one, Mr. Chair.
If I may, I can speak to that. Instead of flying a flag that is controversial and stirs up different opinions and rather is divisive than unifying, let's put during this month of June, the accepted by the Church Sacred Heart of Jesus. Which is, the month of June is dedicated to the Sacred Heart of Jesus. In this heart, everybody has a place. Jesus' heart is for everybody, no matter what gender, what ideology, religion, and whatever one belongs. Jesus loves everybody, but at the same time calls everybody to a higher standard, to His gospel of new life that He's giving.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions from the trustees, so I would like to, to thank you for your time and your courage to come forward and the time you put into your presentation. We appreciate your earnest thoughts that you gave us. Your response to delegation will be dealt with in item 8.1. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on to 5.6, flying of the Pride Flag. This is our final delegation, and it will be presented by Ms. McConnell. Ms. McConnell, please proceed.
Okay, am I heard?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chair Murphy and trustees of the Halton Catholic School Board. It had come to my attention that the Halton Catholic School Board is considering displaying the Pride Flag in all our schools for the month of June. And we realize our need to work toward loving, respecting, and accepting every person, no exceptions. As educators in the home and at school, one of our goals is to help each student and our peers discover their own dignity and worth before God, that each one of his children is precious in his eyes. For years now, I've experienced the effort put forth from our principals and teachers to enhance in every way the value of each student. My husband and I are grandparents of five, who are all attending the Catholic schools. We have, we have been present for different sporting events, Christmas plays, Grandparents' Day celebrations. Even just picking the kids up at school leads us with a feeling of positivity for how the children are made to feel special, important, and a real sense of belonging. This is so commendable, and we are proud of the effort put into the daily experience our children have in being part of our Catholic system. In regard to the proposal that you are considering, it is a well-known fact that many kids are becoming sexually active at very young ages. And the Pride Flag, it does mean different things to different people. My concern is that we Catholics are giving a message to the outside world that ultimately we condone the blessing of same-sex unions or marriage. And that is the innuendo without having to use words. The Catholic Church is breaking down and changing its teachings on sexuality. This simply is not true. The flag is largely about sexual freedom. Yes, and it's about celebration and inclusivity as well. But the fact remains, the Church stands firm on its teaching about sex of any kind outside of married life. According to our Church Magisterium, church's sex is only for married couples to enjoy loving one another with an openness to procreation. This has been true for more than 2,000 years when Christ began His Church on earth. Any form of sex outside of marriage is fornication and a sin. Any form of sex outside of marriage is fornication and a sin, an abuse of the God-given gift of our sexuality. So like I said before, displaying the pride flag could be telling people something about our church that isn't true. Certainly, we want all our Catholic school boards to always reflect the teaching of our church. It is appalling to think that people today are still making jokes and using derogatory terms for people with tendencies towards 2S LGBT. That is a sin. But flying a flag to celebrate this sector of our school's population excludes other sectors, like children coming from abusive homes, divorce situations, children with learning disabilities or physical disabilities, refugees, children of color, et cetera, et cetera. Do they not also deserve a month of flag waving? They too suffer to some degree from feeling different, left out, insecure, and wanting to be totally accepted by their peers. There is an alternative here. What if we could come up with a flag to proudly wave all year round? Not just for the month of June, signifying our oneness in Jesus and in one another. To show on a flag that we celebrate God's love for us and our love for each other. Everyone is included. And when you see that flag waving, it will be a reminder of just that. We are loved. I propose two different ways to proceed with this. There's a flag that's already established, and it's attached by the Waterloo Catholic School Board. It's quite beautifully done. It's an image of Jesus blessing the children, kind of in a stick form. The heads are different colors, showing uniqueness but oneness. Another idea would be to have the children of our school board, of the school board, enter a contest. They are to come up with a flag themselves. Both elementary and high school students could participate. In doing this, it would create a fun time of working together towards another way of showing our spirit of community and care for one another. The end product, a flag from our own children, celebrating life and love throughout the Halton region. I thank you for giving me this time to share my feelings and that of many others on this subject. May God bless us all.
Thank you, Mrs. McConnell. We do have some questions lined up. Trustee Kelly, you're, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Chair, amazing work. Thank you so much for your delegation. I just wanted to notice that you mentioned that the Catholic Church is breaking down and changing its views on sexuality. Speaking as a racialized student myself, I would like to ask you, would you also hold the same statement in regards to the Catholic Church's previous views and beliefs that allowed for racism? I can give you some background information if you'd like.
We're not talking about racism right now. We're, we're just talking about the issue at hand.
Yes, I understand that. But a specific example in regard to that would be that
Mr. Chair, point of order, the, the subject matter that's being raised by student trustee, not germane to the topic.
Can you, can you state your point of order, trustee Antomasi?
The subject matter introduced by trustee, student trustee Kelly is not germane to this particular topic.
Yes, I would agree.
The delegator is speaking to the motion as has been put forth by the trustees.
Understood. Trustee Kelly, so if you could stick to the content of the presentation?
Okay, of course. I would change my wording then, because the Catholic Church ultimately is rooted in love for all folks, as has been repeated tonight. And, you know, the legislator and documents continue to change and progress as society does. So with that in mind, would you still stand on that statement?
Well, yes, because the church does have, it, it has teachings. And it's not for us to just pick and choose which ones we're going to, we're going to abide by. So.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Patricia, I commend you for offering, for offering probably the only, your suggestions are a word of compromise. They are a word of trying to fit, to recognize the reality and the plight of these kids and balanced with the reality of the church. It will never be perfect. Never be perfect, because for 2,000 years, like you said, we've had battles that are unreconcilable. But those are not the ones we have to focus on. We have to focus on things that can bring us together. And I want to thank you for putting those suggestions forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, you're up next. I'll just highlight that we're almost at 10 o'clock, so we'll have to do a, a vote soon. I just don't want to surprise if I interrupt you during your question, trustee O'Brien. Please proceed. You have the floor?
Thank you. And through Mr. Chair, to Patty. Patty, thank you for your frank and honest allegation. In your delegation, you say the flag is our, is largely about sexual freedom. So are you saying that the flying the pride flag is encouraging students to explore different forms of sexual expression?
No, like, I, I agree with what Father was talking about. All, all children were called to chastity. Everybody is called to chastity, but children certainly. And, and that's not the case. We all know that, that children are exploring sexual avenues today. I mean, I'd like to hear a person that's going to disagree with that.
All right. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, did you have a follow-up question?
No, I do not. Thanks.
Are, are there any other questions, trustees? I don't see any. Ms. McConnell, thank you very much. We'll deal with your delegation under agenda item 8.1. 6.1, approval of the minutes. Are there, the minutes of April 6, 2021, regular boarding? Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Oh, sorry, we're almost, we're at 10 o'clock. Before we do that, let's, let's have a vote to extend. Can I have a mover?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee O'Hern Chernato. Do we have a seconder? Vice Chair Duarte will call a recorded vote. Trustee DeRosa?
Mr. Chair, I'm very uncomfortable with being rushed into a situation. I vote against.
Okay, you're opposed to extending. Trustee, Vice Chair Duarte? In favor? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Chernato?
Mr. Chair, point of order, the motion has failed. We require two-thirds majority to extend past 10 o'clock. Bylaw 4.1.8.
Well, thank you for your point of order, trustee Antomasi. I will check with parliamentarian Kapoor. One moment, please.
Hello, Chair.
Yes, Mr. Kapoor.
You're in the middle of a roll call vote, Chair. No interruptions, even including points of order are allowed during the voting process until the vote is completed. While we may now know what the answer, what the total will be, I think the rule, not, I think, Robert's Rule says that you should complete the vote.
Okay. And can you comment on as to the majority required?
I mean, it is a, I will confirm, and, but I do, I believe that that is correct, that it requires a two-thirds vote to continue past 10.
Thank you. So I'm in agreement with your point of order, trustee Antomasi. And the meeting is no longer extended, past this point. And could we have the closing prayer?
That's ridiculous.
Point of order, there's no debate after this.
Agreed, trustee O'Brien. I agree with your point of order.
So noted, thank you.
Please, I would caution all trustees to, to please mute their mics. We're about to do the closing prayer.
Sorry, Chair. I hate, I, I really hate to interrupt the prayer, but, and your ruling may be, you, you, you can make the ruling any way you wish. I just want to make sure I was clear. The roll call vote should be completed.
My, my apologies. You did, you did say that. Trustee O'Hern Chernato, how do you vote?
I'm in favor to extend the meeting.
Okay. Chair Murphy's in favor. Trustee Guber?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
So we do not have a two-thirds majority. The, the meeting is not extended. Trustee O'Brien, would you please lead us in closing prayer?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. For God, make the sign of our faith in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. As we come to the end of our time together, we thank you for what has been accomplished here today. May the matters discussed serve as a catalyst to move us forward and cause us to advance and see growth in all areas of our lives. May we leave here recognizing you are the God of all wisdom, and you are willing to lead us forward. Thus, we pray in the name of our Lord Jesus. Amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb. Jesus, holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us, sitters down at the hour of our death. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.